All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular governing board meeting of the Jefferson Elementary School District, September 28th, 2016, at 7:02 PM. Could we have members present, please?
Shaquille Ali. Bo Lea Inga Anawai.
Here.
Bie Brizwella.
Here.
Clayton Koo.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here. Thank you. And I believe we have some students from JFK to lead us in the pledge tonight. Stand up and do so. Everybody want to rise up?
Please place your right hand on your heart and repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, great, thank you. Nicely done. And we'll be hearing more from our students in a few minutes. If board members could take a minute to review the board meeting guidelines, please. All right, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second? Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Lining up positions. Okay. And item 6A, we have a public hearing to review and approve a resolution on the district's sufficiency of pupils' textbooks. The governing board of the Jefferson Elementary School District will hear public comments on the resolution stating sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials at every school for the 2016-17 school year that it is consistent with their alignment to state content standards and most recent adoption cycles. And that hearing opens at 7:05 PM. Do we have any speaker cards on that? And I believe that we do have a sufficiency of textbooks, so this is good news. And with no speaker cards, we will close the hearing at 7:06 PM. Okay. We get an item 7A. J.F. Kennedy's Dragon Patrol. Special presentation, Mr. Matt Harris, President of John F. Kennedy Elementary School, along with students, will share about their lunchtime program, Dragon Patrol, older students partnering with younger students to improve student engagement and safety on the schoolyard. Mr. Harris.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It is my distinct pleasure to introduce several 5th grade, so far females, but hopefully Keith is on his way. Milliana Camacho, please stand when I say her name. Milliana Camacho. Naveya Davidson. Micaela Gernolin. Alyssa, and I will butcher her last name, I promise, I won't say it. Alana Mercado. Micaela Villanueva. And Alicia Del Rio. Keith Guevara is on his way, and Stello is unable to join us tonight. Thank you, ladies, you can have a seat. Now, we at JFK had an ineffective lunch program for the last several years. And by lunch program, obviously, we use the same thing everybody else does, but our format for how the students lined up and then went into the lunchroom and left the lunchroom left us with several major problems. One, there was a bottleneck of congestion. We had two large lunchrooms that were filled with students, and the line would go all the way down the hallway. So we found ourselves at the end of the day, and keep in mind, the motto now is "Have a Great Day at JFK", and we realized our students during their recess time were spending far too much of the time standing in line, waiting to go from point A to point B. Whether it was lining up to get into the lunchroom or lining up to leave the lunchroom, it created an environment where we just didn't feel like our students were getting the mobile time that they needed during their 50-minute lunch break. So, the dean, Ms. O'Neill, and myself, we sat down and we looked at how we could stagger the lunch. And it seems like a pretty simple thing at first, but then you realize, by not putting everybody in the room in front of you, you have multiple groups of students around the campus. And we had sheep that needed a shepherd. So, we have found some of the most adorable shepherds that we could. What happens every day at lunch is we have this great group of students behind me. They don their orange vests, and they rotate, so it's not every student every day. And this group of 5th grade students is charged to spend their lunch period with the 1st and 2nd graders. They are outside, and you can see at the top, ooh, laser pointer. You can see up at the top. Here they are playing on the Tanbark area. Here is Keith, one of our students, actually helping a student from our special day class get up, and they interact with them socially as part of the mainstreaming. And here we have Alicia and who else was out there? Was that Micaela? Thank you. They are using the parachute. And then, that's all out on the yard between 12 o'clock and 12:15. Then, at 12:15, they're in charge of helping all of the students line up, disseminate the lunch cards, which to 1st and 2nd graders is no small task, and then escorting them through the JFK garden into the lunchroom. And here you can see them beginning this process. So, Mr. CJ is, of course, still the yard supervisor in charge, and he oversees this program. But, once the students line up, you can see here we have our Dragon Patrol members walking the line and giving them their lunch cards, he's holding the lunch card pouch. And then they proceed down the hallway, which is in fact our garden. This is very critical, because the garden is a dirt path, and we know 1st and 2nd graders' propensity for running. And so it is very effective to have student leaders both at the front of the line and then at the back of the line. This keeps, you can see, our 3rd grade group, which eats at 12. At 12:15, they are shifting outside. And so, at 12:15, here we have our 1st and 2nd grade group coming in. It's a narrow doorway, and without this, we've had several collisions, and it gets a little bit touch-and-go. So, we have now instituted with our Dragon Patrol, one is the blocker, you can see she's doing a great job here, the other is the leader. They then lead them into the lunchroom, where all of our 1st and 2nd graders sit in the back tables, and our Dragon Patrol gets to have a seat at their own table and eat next to them. When they conclude their lunch at around 12:30, they then walk out and escort the 1st and 2nd graders back out to the yard, where they lead in further games from 12:30 until lunchtime ends at 12:50. What we have found with this experience, 1st and 2nd graders eat more, and they eat better, because they've run around and played a little bit, they're not just antsy to get out onto the yard. Also, they have a constant feeling of what games they can play. They're not lost on the yard, the students lead them in their activities. And all of this has been very, very important to me, because of course, you can know, my first school in the district, the lunchroom was directly next to the yard. It seems like a small thing, but I found out when I went over to John F. Kennedy, it's a very significant factor. Having the students go through the school needs more control. You can't just release a student one at a time out onto the yard, as we did for four years at Tobias, without ever an issue. At John F. Kennedy, it's a much larger campus, with the campus being the playground in the back, the MUR in the front. We devised this system, and it has worked magnificently well. The lunchroom has been cleaner, students are eating more of their food, they're not taking it, eating a few bites, and then asking to go outside, they're much more active. And what's been really great to see has been the leadership that these young ladies, Keith is not here yet, that these young ladies have grown and demonstrated. This was something that they were approached and asked about, and if anybody wanted to volunteer, they stepped forward. One person stepped on, did it for a week, realized it wasn't for her. Then, when she heard about this, she wanted to step back on again, and we said, "Well, no, that's not really the point of it." This recognition came from service, not service for recognition. And it's been very successful, and we're really thrilled about it. And one last thing to point out, since it's the last year I came when these were being painted, we encourage any members of the board to come by. We have our murals that I spoke about last year, they are both done, in the front of the school and in the back. And we now have two more murals being put together by a Procedo Ice partnership, along with our 4th graders this year. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. So, does anybody have any questions?
Questions?
I was just saying, we can, yeah, address the panel down there.
I don't have any questions right now, but I just wanted to say thanks for instituting this program. I'd like to see when the students are taking leadership, responsibilities at the school, and ownership and pride in their school, keeping things safe and organized during lunchtime. For anyone who's been on, I mean, not college, school campuses, those transition times can be really challenging, like you said, going in and going out. So I'm glad to see that the students are involved in helping that to be a smooth process, and that they're actually getting more time also to play during lunchtime, and not just stand in line for half the time and then eat, and then the bell rings and they have to go back to class. So, thanks for implementing this program at the school. And thanks for you all participating in it.
I don't have a question. I too want to commend the staff, I thank you, Mr. Harris, and all of the parents and teachers that are involved. You're teaching volunteerism, leadership, mentorship, I mean, it's touching so many areas, creating healthy habits. And all of you students are able to be a part of that, it's actually strategic planning that you guys are now just embarking on, and when you get older, you'll say, "Hey, I actually touched on that when I was in 5th grade." You guys are actually involved in the process of creating these habits and systems in your school. And I think it's wonderful that you're taking ownership, because you're teaching compassion to younger students at your school, and you're modeling a behavior that they can learn from. And all that, you're being able to do by participating in the Dragon Patrol. So, thank you for creating this space and this program. And it would be great to see it continue to be modeled in other schools or programs similar to it. I'm sure there's other great things, but it's wonderful to hear what's going on at JFK. So, thank you for sharing.
I also like to thank all the students for being involved in the Dragon Patrol. And a couple of questions I had to ask, and I'm not sure which one wants to answer it, but how did you choose the name Dragon Patrol?
Our school mascot.
Okay, that's a good answer. And the other thing I wanted to say, to thank was Mr. Harris for taking the initiative, along with your, did you say it was? I didn't hear the name earlier. For taking the initiative to start this program, because it's inspiring for the students. It also helps the younger children. I know the younger children sometimes in 1st or 2nd grade might be just a little bit afraid to go and approach something different, or, you know. And so for them, you're helping them, you're guiding them. So, say thank you to each other for joining this group, for being brave to say, "We'll do it", and for helping the younger students. They'll always remember you, the younger ones, they'll always remember that you were their, you know, friend, helper, and I'm sure they're going to remember you for many years. So, thank you for doing this, it makes everything safe. And I like the idea, which is a great idea, about having exercise before you eat. I think it's great, I think it's a great thing to do. So, thank you, guys, I'm going to go over and see all of this, how beautiful it looks even in this picture. And thanks to the parents for having such wonderful children that are inspired to do that, okay? And thanks for coming tonight.
I want to say thanks, Mr. Harris, for the presentation, as well as the program, and to the students and parents and staff for making this possible. I also had a question. I guess this is your first, the first year of the program, you said?
This is the first year of the program.
What do you want, plan to do for the second year, coming years?
I would think expand it, so then that way the students have more of an opportunity to do this one week and then have three weeks off, basically. You know, right now, they kind of get to rotate, and it's one week on, one week off, at most, and we would like to see more students take part.
That'd be great. I have a question, if there's a really brave student who's willing to answer it. I'm guessing that you probably like doing it, I wanted to hear somebody tell me what you like best, what's fun about it. Okay, I've got two volunteers, you can both tell us, you can step up to the microphone and take turns.
Oh, fine.
What I like most about hopping is playing with the kids, and then sometimes they, like today, we're playing jump rope with the kids, and how like, when they have a problem, when we solve it, they all talk all nice to each other, they forgive each other and become friends again.
That is cool.
What I like most about Dragon Patrol is that we get to communicate more, and that they just get a better...
Better time? Yeah, okay. And you get to know some of the little kids, which usually 5th graders don't get to do. That's pretty cool. All right, thank you. And thank all of you for coming, and we do have some certificates, or to thank you for coming, and helping us in doing the allegiance as well. There's just one. One extra.
We each have two.
Oh, we each have two, okay.
No, you only have one.
You only have seven kids.
Oh.
Certificate of Appreciation to Naveya Carolina.
Not surprised.
I have a certificate for Micaela Villanueva. And I have another one for Alyssa Mongola.
And I have one for Alyssa W. I have one for Alana Mercado. Last one is Malama? Camacho, I got the last name.
All right, and another big round of applause for our Dragon Patrol. This brings us to Section 8, in case persons wishing to address the board, and we do have a speaker card for Ms. Melinda Dart.
Good evening, Melinda Dart, from AFT 3267. I wanted to make sure that everyone knows that we have two great events coming up in our district. And one is an event where we're going to be giving away 40,000 books, and that is at Woodrow Wilson on Saturday, October 8th, from 9:00 to 3:00 PM. So we invite everyone to come to that. Students can take 10 books, and if anyone wishes to help set up for this event, they should get in touch with me at JFK, or just show up at Woodrow Wilson the afternoon before, on October 7th. We have a lot of volunteers, I want to thank all the people that have been volunteering to help set up for that, because it's a lot of books to arrange, and apparently they come all mixed up. And then we separate them out into the appropriate piles, but they're for birth to age 18. So, high school students are welcome to, and middle school students, and little guys, toddlers, and it's going to be a wonderful day of celebrating the book. And another event coming up concerns an election coming up in our city. There are people running for Daly City Council, which is the body that meets in this room on Mondays. And there are, there are two seats on that body, and there are many people running for the seats. I think it's six, seven. And so there is a candidate forum, where you can listen to the candidates speak, and you can ask them questions. And that is Monday, October 3rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, at Ceramani Del Rey Galleria, which is 699 Ceramani Boulevard in Daly City. And we highly encourage everybody to get involved and find out about who's running for city council, and be informed. And of course, if you're not registered to vote, and you can be, you can still do that. And we encourage everybody to get prepared for this big election coming up in November with so many issues that affect schools on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Melinda. Couple of important announcements there. Okay, and we have administrator comments? Ms. Kessler? Okay, Ms. McCulley can pick it.
So, a couple of weeks ago was the back-to-school nights for the middle schools. I attended Fernando Rivera's back-to-school night, a big turnout there. Speaking of Fernando, on October 10th, we are going to be having our second institute day, which is not a student day for, not a school day for students, but it is a workday for staff, and it's for all staff, certificated and classified. And we're going to have a conference-style day, and so if you are interested in joining us, there's going to be all sorts of sessions. We have CPR, we have writing workshop, we have tech, technology integration, the next-generation science centers, the history/social science frameworks, English language development training, building inclusive classroom communities, and classroom first aid. And then we're also going to have opportunities for our classified and certificated staff in some areas to collaborate, which rarely happens, so we're really excited about this day. And so if you are interested, I'll put in the info bulletin, but please let me know, and we can let you know more about the day, so that if you're interested in joining us. And then one more thing, next Tuesday is our first parent involvement advisory committee meeting at the district office at 6:00 PM. And we're partnering with families and schools, they received a grant to work with districts to help with the family engagement process with the LCAP. And so they'll be there, they're going to be interviewing several staff members and community members that day, and they're going to come and share the work that they're doing. So it's going to be very enlightening, and you're welcome to come to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
First off, I'd like to thank the students from JFK for their, the work that they're doing, the service that they're doing, and also for sharing with us how they felt about it. I think it's wonderful that not only do we have these programs, but the students come up in front of the board and the public, and talk about their experiences, sharing it with all of us. And it also, that helps them be better leaders and get used to public speaking as well. I went to the back-to-school night at Ben Franklin, and it was very exciting, because we had our first, first annual distribution of Chromebooks. And it was exciting to see this happen. It's a new era of technology, we've all accepted that it's here, and we're moving forward with it. And last, but definitely not least, I want to remind everybody to register to vote. The election is in just under six weeks, and it's extremely important, all the ballot measures and the candidates running for president and other positions as well. So, please vote. In back, there are voter registration forms, so anybody that would like to vote that is of voting age, or if you know somebody who is of voting age that is not registered, please take a voter registration form. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to thank also the folks from JFK. That's where I first started teaching here, and I remember that line going down that corridor, and everybody dodging to it, and it just went on forever. So, that's a great opportunity to establish the leadership and just make it chill in that lunch line. I went to TRP for the back-to-school night, it was a great crowd, both bleachers were packed. And again, like Ms. Kessler mentioned about the passing out of computers for the 6th graders, it was really good how everybody came together and worked it out, the whole staff was there. So it wasn't just a couple of people in line, it was great to see that. And also, there's a great opportunity going on. The state is offering grants to school districts to offer a pathway for classified personnel to become teachers. So, our county is bringing all the districts together to see, develop a team to write that grant for getting our folks involved. So I'm going to be going to a meeting next week at the county office of that, and so I'll report back afterwards.
Thank you. Okay, board member acknowledgements and commendations?
Yes, first, I would like to acknowledge and commend all, first of all, administration, Mr. Vidalis, all the board members that pushed for more technology and better utilization of technology in the schools. I was able to go to all three back-to-school nights at the middle schools, and I want to commend the principals, all the teachers that were there. That was a big process, to give out all those computers. But I was really happy, and the main thing that I remember from that evening was the look on all the parents' faces. Of course, the students too, but I could see the parents were really happy and proud to see what we were providing for those students. And I'm just proud to be a part of, that I was a part of making that happen in the school district. I would also like to commend the San Mateo Office of Education, the San Mateo Managers' Office, San Mateo School Boards Association, and the Silicon Valley Community Foundation for a conference that they're going to sponsor called Breaking Ground on Workforce Housing Conference. And that's really important to us, being education leaders here in this part of the county, because it's hard for educators to live here because of the high cost of housing and cost of living in general. So there will be a conference to address this on Friday, October 14th. And we need as many people to show up to that as possible and get input into how we can make sure we can support our teachers being able to live here in our community. And last but not least, I want to also commend the San Mateo County Labor Council, and they will be having phone banking and precinct-walking dates that everyone can get involved in. If you care about what's been brought up tonight a couple of times, which is that there's nationwide election going on, there's local elections too, that really mean a lot for us, and where we're going to go as a community, what direction we're going to go in. So, register to vote, get out there, and vote for the person, or the people, or the issues that really matter to you that are going to help us. And I believe that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. This past Monday, I think it was Monday, we were able to, myself, president of our board, as well as board trustee Shaquille Ali, we were able to attend the CSBA evening with CEO Vernon Billy. For me, it was very enlightening to continue a conversation, especially when we're in the midst of a time of a lot of racial divide, and when people question inequality. So it was nice to hear it from a perspective of education. Earlier that day, I had the opportunity to speak to students at Sequoia High School, and in an auditorium filled with young minds who are really hungry to see where people such as ourselves, who they consider to be leaders, where we stand in the education system and the process. They wanted to know where we stood as far as standing up and protecting their rights, and what are we doing to enlighten and raise awareness with everything that's happening outside of the classroom? What I found amazing was that they said to me, "We see this all on the news, we see it on our phones, but we're not allowed to really get deep and talk about it in the classroom." So, that struck a chord with me, because I don't think our students are ever too young to talk about race, to talk about inequality, and to talk about a lot of the communities that are marginalized because of living in the Bay Area. You can be marginalized just by living here. It doesn't matter what color of your skin, the color of your skin, but the reason why I bring it up is I love the fact that we serve on a board that produces quality, along with the administrators. You're hearing it about how we're pushing for Google Chromes to reach the hands of our students, but I believe that we're looking at the new initiatives and the laws that are passed with regards to ethnic studies coming into our classrooms. That's raising awareness of who we are and talking about diversity. It's the unknowing and the fear that continues to hold us back and make us be reactionary. And I thank the administrators, I thank the staff, and it starts at the home. It really does. We can only do so much here. The first teachers are in the home. So if they're learning hate and racism, all I can say is that that's something that we hope to break down those layers and to impart light. I love serving on this board, to know that in some way, shape, or form, I'm able to do so. do that with the partners that sit next to me. So it was amazing for me to hear that from students. I would love to see those conversations continue to happen in our district, in our classrooms, and I love the fact that that was something that was resonating with CSBA. So with that said, I, I love this work. I'm honored to serve this district, and I'm honored to serve the students and the families of this community, but it's a team effort. It's a team effort, so. Thank you, commend JFK again. This is the model. This is the model. This breaks down those barriers, so thank you.
Okay, well, both of you said a lot of stuff that I would like to say, but I'm not going to repeat it. But I think, looking at the board sitting here, you can see we're diverse. You know, we're not all the same. We're not, you know, like they say, the old time Miss America was blonde and blue-eyed. That doesn't happen anymore. But the most important thing, and you touched on it, is naturally, parents, it's important to be there with your children always. You're here tonight, that shows. You've got wonderful children, and they're helping other children. And I don't think they're looking to see what they're made of, they're just the children in the classroom. So I think we have a good beginning, and I think we, we will continue always welcoming everybody, no matter who they are, because everybody is special. Okay? So I just want to say that this is probably the first time that we even have a board that sits together, working as well together as I've ever seen in 34 years. So to me, that's, you guys all take a bow, because each of us come here and we, we work together. And of course, administration. Bernie's great, we don't want to ever lose him. And the rest of you guys do, all of you are special. You're all, you all do a lot. And since we're saying kudos to, you know, I have to say, Melinda, I can't thank you enough for all that you do, besides being a teacher, and you're, you help other teachers become better teachers, but what you do in your role as a union. She's not aggressive and, you know, she's, no, 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 she's not. But she knows how to talk to all of us, how to engage us, how to be a part of us. And it's, and Melinda has really brought even the parents, the teachers, and the public, and the board members together, that we all have to work for education, guys, everybody. We can't sit back and say, "Just let the teachers do it," or "Just let the board do it." It takes all of us as a team together. We love your kids, love all of them. We try to get to the schools. It's hard to go to every single, every school every day, but we try to go to the schools to see what's happening and to see those wonderful children. Thank you for being great parents, and thank you, I can't see all of you, because I'm too short, but all of you, all you drag and patrol people, thank you. Thank you for coming. But I would like to shout out to another group that does a tremendous job in our district, and that's our Jefferson Council PTA, and each of the PTAs at each school. If some of you have not been involved in PTA, please get involved. It's a group that works hard to help bring money to your classrooms, helps to engage all of the parents together with teachers, and they recently had, last Monday, a wonderful dinner, and they really show a lot of love and togetherness in bringing everything together. And so anytime you see a, an invitation to go to something, even if it's not in your school, go over to the other school and bring your children, and let them engage with other kids and see what the other schools are doing. Okay? So this is probably getting way too long for all of us, but it just is a time to say that we're really proud of all of you, we're happy that we're all together, and about the voting situation, please get involved. Get involved. It's a long ballot, take the time to read it, and anytime it says "education", I'm not telling you how to vote, Jess. If we do a lot with education, the children grow up to be prosperous, and they're going to be successful. If we ignore it, it doesn't happen. Be there for the children, and tell your neighbors, and especially those people that don't have children, it's important that they get involved, because it keeps the community, it brings the value of your homes higher, if you have a good school. Enough. Thank you.
That's kind of tough to follow up on all of them. I was going to say, it's like, it's great to be in the school district that kind of is always on the cutting edge of education and technology in the classroom, so I'm proud to say that I'm a part of the school before that. And just kind of following up on everybody says, register to vote. Yesterday was National Voter Registration Day, and you can register to vote literally online at vote.gov, and there's like this whole campaign right now that you can technically actually register to vote in one minute and 34 seconds. It's actually that quick to do now. So if you haven't registered to vote, go ahead and vote. There's so many things on the ballot, because one vote actually can make a difference. So just remind everyone to go ahead and vote.
Thank you. I don't think there's a single thing I could add to all of this, other than thank you all for coming and presenting with us and sharing. And it's such a great district, there's so much amazing stuff going on. I love the fact that we have students here at our meetings to share that with us. Okay, Mr. Vidalis, comments and correspondence?
Yeah, a little bit of both. So thank you to JFK students for coming out and sharing with us this wonderful program, and I just look forward to seeing you guys grow up and become the leaders that we need. Ms. Lia Inga Anawai, I just want to jump a little bit on, on your comment there, and you've heard me say this before, I think the whole board has, but we have a really unique learning lab here in Daly City, and in each of our classrooms, where students from different cultures and different linguistic backgrounds and different ethnic and national origins are learning together, probably more so than in any other community on the peninsula. And my vision is to see us realize that into a powerful core of young adults and eventually older adults that know how to navigate differences in a positive and healthy way. And I think we have a great opportunity to do that in our classrooms. Our teachers are excited about utilizing that learning lab, and it's a learning lab that money cannot buy. Some of our wealthiest communities in, on the peninsula, they don't get this opportunity, and they can't buy it. But we have it here, and it's free, and we're going to, we're going to be able to use it to the benefit of our whole community. I too was at the Ben Franklin School-to-Home Kickoff Celebration. It was very cool. I got to see the first student in our district get their Chromebook, because they staggered, and Ben Franklin was at the beginning of the night, and so they were the very first one throughout the whole district, and of course, we took a picture of that. It was a pretty cool historic moment. Looking forward to seeing all the educational benefits that result from that, as well as the access benefits for our families of having a device like that in their home. One quick announcement, and I don't have all the details, but I'd be happy to get that to you. San Mateo County Reading Association is awarding M.H. Tobias School an award for their Read-a-Thon. I believe it's on October 4th, but I don't have all that information on me. You can find it online. They're having a celebration out in the Redwood Shores Library, I think, where they will be awarded that, that award and, and honor. And the last thing is, you know, annually, we get these letters from the county office of education, and I report to you that they've accepted, or they've, they've reviewed, and they've, we got the one about our, our budget, and so, you know, the same things that Ms. Kessler shared with the, with the board, you know, are echoed throughout this letter. The same things to look out for and be aware of are echoed in this letter. And the biggest one that, that I take away from this as I was reading is, they're very, they're the agency that determines if we are viable enough to continue being in charge of ourselves. And they're the ones who would recommend the state to take us under receivership if we cannot do that on a financial basis. And so they just continue to show us and tell us that, you know, we have one-time funds, we need to use those for one-time purposes. They identified that our expenses are expected to be greater than our revenues for this year, and so we need to start considering some different steps to take. After January, Ms. Kessler will be presenting on the governor's budget and outlining what we see needs to happen in order for us to remain in control of our school district. So that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is the time where we move on into the business of the night, and I want to invite all of you to stay, but I also recognize that we have some children in the audience who may need to be getting home. Feel free to go ahead and exit. I could ask that you go out quietly and remain quiet out in the foyer, because we will be continuing the meeting, but feel free to get up and leave if you need to take the children home. And thanks again for bringing them and coming. Okay, so, section nine, general functions. All right.
Hi.
Come again.
Yes, do.
We have to take a minute to let them out.
Yeah.
Goodbye dragons.
Got so many of them.
Guess we know who your relatives are.
I have one at every school.
A little one that's waving to everybody.
Okay.
Well, hello out there.
Thank you to those of you who have remained.
One over there too.
And over there. Okay, section nine, item A, consent agenda. Could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second bet.
Okay, we need a roll call vote on this one, please?
Mr. Ali.
Aye.
Ms. Lia Inga Anawai.
Aye.
Mrs. Brizwala.
Aye.
Mr. Ku.
Aye.
Dr. Douglas.
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. Item B, Resolution Number 16-09-28A, Week of the School Administrator. The administration recommends adoption of Resolution Number 16-09-28A, designating the week of October 9 to 15, 9th to 15th, 2016, as the week of the school administrator.
I just wanted to draw the board's attention that there was a date correction on the backup to match the dates of the week. So if you have seen them electronically earlier in the week, you saw a different one, but the one that you will sign today has the correct dates.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm sorry, Bernie, it's hard to hear you, but in the agenda, is that not the correct date on, on the item?
The one that is on the backup in the agenda today is the correct date.
Okay.
Yeah, the one that was printed out for you last week is not.
Okay.
Is there any discussion?
I wholeheartedly support us taking this action. Being an administrator is sometimes a thankless position, and many people have asked me over the years, "Why aren't you a principal?" And I don't know, I don't think, I don't think, kudos to the ones who are doing it.
Definitely.
But that includes also all the school district staff, these wonderful people right here, correct?
Yes, yes, our deans, our, our district office personnel, all our administrators.
All the people behind the scenes getting it done. Thanks.
And I'm not going to read the whole resolution, because it's a page and a half long, but I think we can sum it all up in the "whereas, providing quality service for student success is paramount for the profession. Therefore, we resolve that all school leaders in the Jefferson Elementary School District be commended for the contributions they make to successful student achievement." Because they're, they are instrumental in making that. Without good leadership, it's very hard to have everything work. So if we have a motion or any further discussion?
I'll make the motion, I guess.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 16-09-28A, Week of the School Administrator.
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ali.
Aye.
Ms. Lia Inga Anawai.
Aye.
Mrs. Brizwala.
Aye.
Mr. Ku.
Aye.
Dr. Douglas.
Aye.
All right. Well, congratulations, and thanks again, guys. Okay, and item C, our solar energy production and savings update. The board will receive a report on JESD solar energy production for the end of the second year of full implementation and compare with projected production estimates.
Yeah, so in years past, we've had representatives from Chevron, which then became Optera, come and do this presentation, and this year, I said, "You know, you don't have to come, I think I could handle it." We've heard it enough, but essentially, you know, in 2012, we passed Measure I, and we had a thou, close to 1,500 kilowatts of solar PV generating capacity that was installed across our school sites and the district office and the central kitchen. At that time that the board approved the project, Optera Energy Systems, I think, it used to be Chevron, guaranteed the district that they would produce that seven and a half million kilowatt hours over this five-year measurement period, and that equates to a little bit over a million 600,000 in avoided energy costs. Now, that dollar figure is elusive, I mean, it was based on energy costing a certain amount over time. I don't know if we've met those benchmarks or not, but I think the important part is, is the production. So to date, the PV systems that we have in place across our sites are averaging about 13% more electricity than was originally projected. So if we monetize that with the expected energy costs, we haven't done it with the actual costs, it's an additional close to $80,000 in energy savings on top of the 620-some thousand dollars that was guaranteed for the first two years of the program. So in addition to the avoided energy savings, what I like, what I like to call is the energy that we do not need to buy. The district also has received close to $350,000 to date of incentives from the state. And I think if you were on the board at that time, we had that discussion. In fact, one of our projects initially was denied, and we needed to wait until all the other approved projects that came in with, with their expected production, and then we were picked up at that point. So I'm glad that the board took, and took the time at that time to go ahead and, and start these projects, because not only are we saving dollars because we're not buying energy, we're also helping to create a cleaner environment for California, because our energy is not produced here, it's produced in other parts of California, and so we don't need to tax that system more than, than we do. Let's see, all right, so this table, it's on the back. Basically, it's the same information that I gave you. I wouldn't focus on the pink section, because again, that's based, those dollars are based on an expected cost of energy. We will actually calculate that for you at some point with actual cost of energy to see what it saves us. But the production that you see there is what we saw in the earlier slide. Essentially, every year, we're producing 13% more energy than we expected to produce. Now, we're guaranteed for the first five years, so if there's a decrease of production in any given year, we make up for it by what has been overproduced. If at the end of five years, we don't produce what was expected to be produced, then Optera will be giving us some funds to make up that difference for us. And I think they'll probably, I don't, I forget what they use, if they use the actual cost of energy at the time, or if they use what they expected energy to cost at that time. Well, I don't think we'll get there, the devices are producing very well. And again, this was Measure I funds, and I want to thank the voters in our community who approved that for us. It's, is producing a great benefit to our community. All of our school sites are benefiting from this, and students are learning about solar energy, it's not just a concept, it's a reality happening in their schoolyard.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions on this?
One small question, is the, the car, electric car spot still being utilized?
It's utilized, we have two staff members that are on that facility that use it on a regular basis. We have a couple of community members who live within three or four blocks of the district office who come in and utilize it, and they, you know, they pay to use it. I did have, happened to have a conversation with one just the other day, and I asked her how she heard about it, and she just heard about it and saw it, and said, "Oh, this is great, I have an electric car, I can come charge here." And she thought that our charges were reasonable, and, and in line with what everywhere else she has charged.
The reason why I ask is because I like that we're, you know, always bringing value to the community in different ways, even if they're small, things like that. And just to re, remind people that there were some naysayers about this project.
I was waiting to say that.
So I'm glad that it's, it's going in a positive direction.
And we were just able to get our charging station on the network so that users in the area, when they log in or they area, when they log in or they can have a phone app, they'll see our charging station. So, if they're running out of battery power in the neighborhood, they know that they can just come down and charge up for the time that they need. I know that when I host meetings, people ask if they could, we could host it because they can plug in and charge while they're in a meeting versus, you know, needing to do that somewhere else later.
Great.
That's great.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, I'm glad to see all this, and thank you for bringing the report to us, because I remember when it first came about, and there was some people not believing it was going to turn out to be any helpful, and that we might be wasting money and stuff like that, but it really is good. I don't have an electric car yet, but if I ever do, I know where to charge it up. But thank you, this is great, it's really great.
I guess my question, since I wasn't here last time this was reported, are there like, kind of like, sets of improvements they do every single year to try to kind of improve energy savings, or how does it, I guess, work?
So, the panels are monitored every year, and they're cleaned every year, we have a contract with them for five years to do so. The contract also includes them providing the information to the California rebate program so that we can qualify for our rebate. So, in a sense, we are paying them to give information to the state so that the state can verify that we're producing what we said we were going to produce, and then they can give us our rebate. So, they do monitor it for five years, cleaning as well as helping to fix any problems that may have arisen. We did have a couple of problems where they had to reinstall something because of the position that was in was getting susceptible to some of the moisture that we have in the area.
And then if we wanted to, I don't think there are any solar panels on buildings, are there?
No.
No, we chose not to put them on buildings because once we touch a building, it has a whole other regulatory process through the Division of State Architects. So, we just did structures, and a couple of schools have some ground-mounted solar panels.
I just wanted, I knew I had something I wanted to say on that, when we did the solar panels, just to catch up, we also did at that same time with the bond money, we did a number of upgrades and improvements for energy efficiency in the schools, you know, changes in lighting and so forth. So, we've been working on it at both ends, both the input and the output, and made some great reductions in our solar, our electricity bills, which frees up money to spend on things for our students.
Yeah, and actually, sort of ironically, I mean, we approved this project in twenty twelve, which is sort of at the height of the recession, you know, we had very little money to do almost anything. Since then, we have increased the amount of electrical devices in our, in our schools, and so we're actually using more energy in twenty sixteen than we did in twenty twelve. But, we're now having to pay far less for that energy because we're producing most of it. So, we're, so the actual savings are sort of, I call it sort of more of a, what's the word, it's, you know, it's not deferred, but you know, transferred, you know, we're not, we're not paying for the electricity that we're using, even though it's increased, and we are able to save money that way.
That's great.
That is a valid point, moving into the twenty-first century, uses more power, and I, it's, to me, it's a great pleasure to see that we're reducing our carbon footprint a little bit as we do that and use more electricity.
I have a question to ask, and this is not really, this exactly, but since we're talking about the energy thing, we still pay PG&E for our energy?
We do, so the, the, the systems were designed to produce about eighty percent of the energy that we consume because they do have a minimum charge for all, PG&E has a minimum charge to all its customers, so we didn't want to overproduce because we wouldn't necessarily benefit from that. So, we do pay for our, at least twenty percent, probably now twenty-five or thirty percent of the energy that we use.
The reason I'm asking is right now, San Mateo County is changing over, we don't really have an option, everybody's going to be.
Correct, yes.
Into this new quality energy thing, and so, just wondered, it, so far, I think it's only for the homeowners, the houses, I think, but is that also coming?
Yes, so that's the Peninsula Clean Energy Program.
Yeah, yeah.
Is starting up in October, and they're going to start transitioning government agencies like us over to energy that is purchased by this collective of San Mateo County, and they're pushing for more green energy, more clean energy. Our staff is going to be getting a presentation from the program to see if we want to consider even greener, so we can say one hundred percent renewable. It does cost us more, but, you know, if we feel strongly about it, we may want to consider that, and after the staff gets briefed on the program and the different options available, we'll be coming to the full board with the presentation and seeking some direction about how to move forward. We don't have a choice right away, in October, we start, we are no longer part, clients of PG&E will become clients of Peninsula Clean Energy in partnership with PG&E, but our payments will be to Peninsula Clean Energy, which the idea is, is that the cost per kilowatt hour is going to be less through them than it would be had we bought it through PG&E, so there's another savings.
That's what I was saying, I was hoping that would happen.
And I think homes can start moving over and sometime after public agencies go.
Oh, no, we're starting pretty soon, but they're doing it in, like, this group first and this group next, and.
We haven't received any information.
Yeah.
Probably because you're, well, you're in Rudmers, so they may be doing county and then to cities or something.
Well, I don't know, have to find out, but, but also, people can op out of it.
People can choose.
Individuals can choose to say customers of PG&E. But agencies, I don't think agencies have a choice, we become, we are, public agencies are, become customers of Peninsula Clean Energy.
But who wants to pay more, nobody.
Exactly.
Oh, okay.
Okay, great, well, thank you very much for that update, and that's such encouraging news. And, this jumps us down, section eleven, business and financial procedures, item C, affidavit of governing board affirming that the foregoing statements on Form J thirteen A, request for allowance of attendance because of emergency conditions are true and are based on official district record. The administration recommends that the board approve the affidavit affirming that the foregoing statements on Form J thirteen A, request for allowance of attendance because of emergency conditions are true and based on official district records. And this is to recover our ADA lost on the day that they had to close Westlake Elementary because of the sewer line issues. So, if there's any questions, ask them, otherwise we'll entertain a motion to approve this.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve the affidavit of the governing board affirming that the foregoing statements in Form J thirteen A, request for allowance of attendance because of emergency conditions are true and are based on official district record. Is that it?
Yeah, I think that's the motion, and.
Second?
You have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
I'm glad we're doing that.
And I'm really glad that was fixed with remarkable clarity.
Yes.
Okay. Section thirteen, number D, school resource coordinator. As a result of analysis and identifying the needs of the schools across the district sites, the administration recommends the creation of the school resource coordinator position and the adoption of the duties of the position. This position was identified as a result of the LCAP process. And I have a question on that. Find my way to the.
I know, looking forward to it.
Thirteen, there we go, my digital version of the, I got a ways behind. So, I noticed that on this, in the, and you guys can tell me if this is the way it's meant to be, or if we need a question. In the job description, under knowledge and abilities, it requires knowledge of correct oral and written usage of language and a designated second language, which to me sounded like that was up to the school, individual school, what they wanted. However, in the education and experience, it specifically states bilingual in English and Spanish.
Yeah, so, we're gonna, we'd like to modify that where we say that Spanish is the designated language that we'd like to put in there as, for the second language, on page two, bottom of page two, under the knowledge and abilities.
Okay, so you would want to say just of English and Spanish?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, again, just in, in the process to roll out a new classified position, the first part, of course, after getting together our draft of.
Yes, this is classified.
Yes, it's a classified position. We need to bring to the board the job description and duties, and again, we're in the process of looking to roll out community schools, and Ms. McCool can talk a little bit about that process, and any other questions that you might have to that?
I have a few questions on it. I felt that, having worked in personnel and doing these kind of things for a long time, I thought that some of these are not really measurable, the things that you're asking for them to do. So, is it, is there a reason why it's so spread out? So, it's not like directly, I don't know how to explain it, but it's something, it's hard to measure.
All right.
Did you copy this from someplace else?
So, yeah, why don't you talk about.
Explain to me, because you probably have a good reason.
Right, no, there are, so what we did is we looked at other districts that actually have community schools and have these types of positions, and so we adapted this job description based on those job descriptions, Oakland Unified School District, Row with City, and so a lot of these tasks, they might not be measurable, but they are necessary, and so we want to make sure that the person taking on this role, because it's a new role, that they understand what will be part of their responsibilities. So, there are some things that, you know, you can't measure, but they are necessary. Do you have something in particular?
Well, yeah, see, generally speaking, when you, when you're applying for a job, it'll say, you know, you can, you can judge them on their knowledge, on their abilities, and you can, you can, their education experience, but it's a little difficult to explain, you put underneath work, working conditions, which I understand why you probably put it there, but to say physical demands and all these things, I would think that, wouldn't you be wanting to somehow test them on that, to see if they were capable? I mean, this sounds more like a fireman's thing. I didn't mean to say it like that, but, you know what I'm saying? You know, if you're hiring someone that has to be able to lift and carry and all these things, it seems like it doesn't belong under the abilities, or, I mean, in other words, you generally put these things because you test them on it, and it doesn't look like you're going to be testing on it.
You'll see that in more and more in job descriptions, that, that we've just been advised by our school insurance group, as well as our legal counsel, that we need to include that. An employee may at inception be able to do that, but over the course of time, may not be able to do that, and so, because it's part of the job description, you know, they may not be able to hold the position if it does require that. And some positions, I think we do have an actual test that asks them to lift and do some of these physical tasks that they're, you know, it's part of the, of the test, for sure it is in, I think the.
Well, that's why perhaps I felt, instead of saying working conditions, those items should have been under ability too. In other words, it doesn't seem like it's something that seems like you're going to be able to, and I'm not saying you have to test them to see if they can pick up a ten-pound sack of potatoes, but I'm just saying is that.
That would be food service or something.
Well, yeah, yeah. And then we can peel them to. No, but I mean, in other words, it's just, I felt I didn't see it ever like this in one of our types of.
I think this is the first draft and kind of getting feedback as we move through the process, but I think I hear what you're saying about.
Because otherwise, if they're not able to do it, how would you be able to, I don't know how to explain it, if they're not tested for it, how would you be able to, to enforce it, I guess?
They might not ever have to do it, right? It's just kind of a protection, it sounds like to me.
Well.
It's not like we're asking them to go.
So, your suggestion is should we move it into duties or abilities?
Somehow, yes.
We can do that.
But, but, you know, the thing is, you actually can say the same thing for almost all our clerical work, sitting or standing for extended periods of time. Hey, we all do that, you know?
I think I've seen those things on other of our job descriptions, I don't know exactly where in the.
What I'm just saying is, if somebody could say that if you're not testing for their ability, then you can't really put that in there. In other words, if all of a sudden they can't do it, it's a technical thing when it comes to hiring.
It's not so much, Ms. Brizwella, it's not so much in the hiring process, but it's more in the process of holding a position and being able to complete the responsibilities where we see the use for this, and we've been advised that we need to include these things. People often develop injuries and other things, and the laws have changed now that we do need to make accommodations. However, if something's listed in a job description and you're not able to complete it, and we cannot make adequate accommodations for them, then they apply for disability or they, you know, they, something else happens because it is a requirement of the job. So, I think that that, you know, almost all of our positions, maybe not mine, Ms. McCullicks has one, Ms. Dart, Ms. Dart has one.
Way too heavy.
Almost all of our positions have some kind of a physical aspect to it, I think mine says I have to be able to drive and hold a driver's license, so, so that's my, my requirement. When that gets taken away, then I can't have the job anymore.
I'd be able to accommodate them.
Okay, I just felt that it was just like a, that was out, out in the back here without.
Well, that does raise, I mean, I think if I'm getting what you're really getting at is that if those things are listed under the knowledge and abilities, the ability to perform those, then you have definitely guaranteed that we have the right to say you have to do that, whereas where they're sitting there kind of under working conditions, you might be able to argue that that wasn't a requirement, that was a warning. So, I could.
And also puts a little.
Just clarity around the expectations.
That if they were to fight something, they would say, well, you guys created the working conditions, you know? I mean, I don't know, it just, I just didn't feel comfortable with that. So, it does sound better if, I feel if it was under.
Put into the abilities.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see that as an exception at all.
Sorry to be picky about that.
I just want to add that though, I'm excited to see this because I remember that meeting we had, the collaboration meeting, and I kind of forgot about that, so I'm glad to see it here that this is one step closer to what we're trying to achieve with the community schools, and the schools will need this person to work hand in hand with the principals to pull off all this coordination of services, so this is great that we're doing this, thank you.
This is wonderful, I've actually served as a school resource coordinator, and when we lost some of those positions in the San Francisco schools, I saw the difference and how it negatively impacted schools, so I think it's wonderful that we're able to pursue this, so thank you.
So, if you are requiring, is it, it says bachelor's degree required, but you strongly say for master's?
Yes.
Okay, so does that make a difference in salary?
Well, right now, we're still getting.
Oh, I know, but I mean, is it going to make a difference?
But it will.
Okay, yeah, okay, yeah, okay. Other than that, I'm fine, thank you.
Are changes sufficient that you need to take it away and bring it back to us, or can we approve that with?
I think you just move it over.
To requested changes.
After it goes to the personnel commission, it comes back to you, and then you approve the whole package.
Okay.
But that one, we can make the changes.
So, we can, we can.
Oh, I forgot to ask the other question, was, under the working conditions, it says environment, does it, do you need to say where you're working? Thought that was rather strange.
I would say it would be important to know where you're working, yes.
Well.
But.
Do we do that for other jobs when they're in and out of the room?
I'd have to review some of those.
I, I thought that was.
So, this is a different kind of a classified position, it's not so much a very defined job, it's going to require some flexibility of ability as well as schedule, as well as location. Initially, they may start in the school site, they may move across sites, they may move across, you know, agencies to be spending some time somewhere else, but anyway, that, it's, it's a very different position because it's not really a school position, it is a social services position, but because social services is not providing them, schools are starting to create these, these positions because we need to support our students and our families, and so it does span a couple of different.
But actually, it only says office, classroom, and meeting settings, and I think, I think once they have the job, they're going to be going to wherever they're needed, I just thought it was strange to put it there.
Too limiting or something?
Environment, varied?
Yeah.
Various?
You're, you're working for the district, you're going to work wherever they ask you to work, but I didn't understand what that meant.
Okay, check out what the other schools say on that.
I'll take that back and make the changes.
I'm sorry.
No, don't be sorry. That's all we're glad to do for your, your input.
Um, then if we can have a motion to-
A move that we accept the, or that we create the School Resource Coordinator position and adopt duties for the position.
As modified?
As modified.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
And then we send it on to the personal commission.
Right. Hey, look at that. Brings us down to, oh, it didn't get circled. I almost went right to Board Policies.
I would have reminded you.
Look at that worth the end.
Sorry about that.
I'm crushed. Okay, this brings us to item, uh, section fourteen, item A, the Board Policies ARs. December twenty fifteen Board Policy Revision Second Reading. So, we will review and revise Board Policies ARs from December twenty fifteen as stated in a second reading. Did anybody come up with anything in the second reading?
I would like to ask that we, um, we allow some, a continuance on that? Is it still being read?
Okay.
Okay.
Sure.
We can do that. So, we have a motion to table that to the next meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I heard that. That's okay. Okay, item fifteen, Board Member Comments, Reports and Reflection on Board Meeting Guidelines.
Do I get to go first again?
You, you know, I always look that way. If you'd like, we could reverse the order and just to keep, uh, Mr. Koo on his toes. Yeah.
I'll, I'll let, um, Mr. LA go first.
Next meeting. I'm looking that direction first.
Well, as far as comments, um, Ms. Brazuela took the words out of my mouth earlier. I wanted to actually commend Melinda Dart. Um, for all the work you've been doing, I haven't seen you in a while, um, but I know it's because you're busy, um, whether it's the, the, uh, Democratic Convention, uh, fighting for us to really get the community schools solidified, working on the measured T and with the Labor Council and the teacher, coaches and the whole nine. So, I just, I'm happy to see you tonight and would like to commend you as well. You're welcome. The only other thing would be, I focused on, because of watching the, um, national debate. When we have a difference of opinion, we will debate the facts of the situation and avoid personalities. We will adjust process, not personalities. Um, it's good to have the facts straight and, um, yeah, we're doing good as far as our board.
So, I-
Thank you.
I chose we will respect differences, we will show respect and never dismiss or devalue others. And I love that, um, I see that every day here. I have to say, I had a really rough day. Uh, and, and the past few days have been a little crazy, but, um, being here, sitting here and, um, embracing this guideline this evening is something that I know that we do as a team. And so, that helps me to be refreshed and be, um, reinvigorated to get back out and to continue to, to do the push. And with that too, I would like to thank you, Melinda. Um, I know, um, you don't, I, I don't believe you hear it enough. I don't, I don't believe that. I think a lot of the things that you do and the partners that you've been able to bridge gaps with and have conversations, courageous conversations with, um, on behalf of many, um, is a thankless job many times. And it takes deep commitment, sleepless nights. And, um, it's without a lot of recognition. So, I, I thank you. As a parent, as a woman, I'm very proud of that. Um, I, I'm thankful to have your voice representing our communities and our children and, and, um, you're appreciated, deeply appreciated. And all of our educators and our team is. And as a mom, I'm just really happy that, um, my son is back on the field and had a great sack and a lot of good, a lot of good tackles, even though I watched concussion. He did dislocate his finger, um, and insisted to go back in the second half. But what, what I love about that is that a lot of his playing start right, started right here in this district. He was playing at Westlake, um, representing our schools here with all of the middle school students with flag football. And, uh, he was playing the ba, in basketball. So, to see all that come back, um, into our schools is just another healthy way of, um, helping our children understand the importance of not being celebrated as an athlete, but being celebrated, um, as a team member, you know? And then taking pride in representing this wonderful district. So, I bring that up because I see that coming back and, and it's just a wonderful feeling to know that we have children that we can support in that way. And, um, I'm just thankful to be here tonight.
Okay, the one I did was six. We will keep our remarks brief and to the point so that all opinions can be expressed. And sometimes our, our, um, remarks might be just a little more than brief. But tonight, I think, uh, I heard some wonderful things that were said. And thank you for sharing how you guys feel and what you see. Um, you know, there are times when you can talk to other school board members in other places and they don't go anywhere. They don't get involved. They're just there, they're on the board. Nobody knows anything. They don't even receive phone calls. A lot of things go on. I'm not saying there's a lot, but there are some. And unfortunately, and years ago, we probably had some that were sitting on this board at one time. But I see that we all try hard to be at the schools, to engage in everything that's going on and to have a good relationship with our unions, our staff, everybody, so that they're respecting what we're doing and we're respecting what they're doing. And we can only, we can only get to be at the best we can be. I think sometimes down, down south, I guess I call it, um, they think we're just nothing up here sometimes, you know? Cause we're just the outcast of San Francisco. But there's, they're hearing a lot of good stuff about us. And that makes me proud when I go someplace, that we are doing really good stuff with less money. But more, more, you know, power, more working, more getting together. I think Melinda knows what I'm talking about. So, yes, I hope that we all will take the extra time to do more than just think about what the election is. And everybody get out and work hard because we need the funds to help us. Um, there was one question I had to ask, and I've been meaning to ask this for quite some time. Every time I drive by, um, the back of the kitchen and the central kitchen and the maintenance, what's going on in the parking lot?
Yeah, same.
It looks like garbage, although, I mean, it's not our garbage. But what is all that stuff there?
Um, I'm not sure, but I will look into it. Um, if you're talking about, if you're speaking about the field area, there was a couple of like big giant boxes and crates.
Yeah.
Those were the playground equipment. Uh, the playground equipment that was installed at our school sites. I asked that same question like around the first day of school. It's like, when is that stuff disappearing? I think it's gone now. I think I drove by it this, today.
Well, a little bit was gone, but yeah.
But anyway, the, the installers are, are gonna go, they're responsible for taking care and getting rid of that, so.
I was gonna organize a team to get out there and help, no?
It's part of their responsibilities. Initially, they said, no, we're not taking it. So, wait, if you had, if we allowed you to store the, the stuff at the maintenance yard, um, you should take away the, the crates. Um, if you had had to put them on the schoolyard, for sure, you would have taken away the crates. You would not have left the crates on the schoolyard after you finished installing. So, they, they are, they know that they're responsible for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Just kept saying that's our property. No. Okay.
Um, I picked, we will bring our best selves to meetings, being fully present and ready to contribute and be responsible. Um, I thought tonight, we had a lot of great conversation during our meeting, a lot of insights, a lot of, uh, feedback on what's been going on in the district. So, thought that fit pretty well for tonight.
And I, um, chose the one, we will work towards the future, learning from the past. Um, and I was thinking about all, so much what, what we saw tonight, the, the thinking towards the future, the solar, the, you know, moving our children into the 21st century with the, um, Chromebooks. And, um, and I'm not sure where the looking towards the past part comes on that, except that it's looking towards, those are things that are learning from our past. You, you don't wanna let those go until you're so far behind that you can't catch up, I guess, is, so. We're doing a great job anyway, I think, of, of, you know, catching up with, with ourselves on this. And that's all I had to say. And persons wishing to address the board on closed sessions items, I have no speaker cards. So, we will take a five-minute break and convene to close session as soon as we've cleaned up.